What works best? A wrestling. Competition and. And the the whole crew that shows up there, it's totally, I mean, they show up with coolers.
This week is bad.
The only challenges.
Yeah.
It's an all day event.
Yeah, next.
They kind of come in at the gym Friday, you know.
That's how the YMCA swim meets are. They just, it's called swimming, their sleeping bags and their pots and their towels and everybody just takes over, yeah, you just take over.
Uh, let's look at.
Big kids don't get to do that so much, but.
Okay.
Um, once through that swim program, YMCA gets to do that.
We got nothing for here.
Twelve I can't. Thought it was interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah. But we're talking about run.
We saw his name on the thing, but didn't see or hear.
Close to it. Oh my ass.
Pressure Tom.
Yeah, I did. I felt it. Oh, it's my arm, right.
Uh huh. Just your arm.
You didn't know.
I suppose.
Say that, thank you.
You didn't really have a choice, so.
I thought you weren't here today.
I don't know how to read a calendar, okay? I just. Leave me alone, stop holding me accountable for my behavior, goodness. No, um. It's next week. Yeah, for sure, this, I don't know what, I don't know how to read a calendar.
I'm happy to see.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I just, I screwed Julie all up, I'm sorry, I apologize. No, I thought it was, I thought this week was already next week and. Next week I won't be here, it's Ella's first swim meet in Hibby.
Oh, in Hibby?
Yep, starts off the season, so.
What does she swim?
Oh my gosh, uh, all of it, she swims everything, yeah, breast, back, fly, free.
Okay.
She's an IM swimmer, she'll do. The fifty free, she does the I, uh, two hundred IM and then two hundred freestyle. Yeah.
Oh, we aren't very centered now.
Otherwise it's.
Call workshops order. Um, I guess first thing we wanted to find out who's gonna be here. August twenty fifth.
Yep.
Check our calendars.
That's next week Monday, correct?
It is.
I will not be here for sure next week.
We've heard that before.
I know, I'm sorry, but I mean it this time, I'm serious.
I'm here.
I'll be here. Thank you, Melissa, it's not right. Yeah. You could hear from Dave?
I haven't heard from Dave yet, as far as I know, he's planning to be, but I have not heard from him.
You're here, Tom?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here, sorry about that.
If I need to be here, Julie, I absolutely can be, it's not a horrible thing if I. Miss it, it's, it's not, I would like to not, but if I have to.
At three, I mean, we could cancel, it's great.
Yeah, the, the twenty fifth. We just looking ahead a couple of weeks, so we have the meeting on the twenty fifth and then Tuesday, the third, uh, the second. We have a meeting. There's nothing urgent. That would, like. There's nothing urgent that we need to do on the twenty fifth. So if we were even unsure about who could be there on the twenty fifth, it wouldn't be a big deal for us to cancel the twenty fifth.
Have we, uh, planned for board presence at the different sites for opening today?
I have not decided who's going where yet, but.
Yeah, I thought generally that's kind of what we do on the twenty fifth, for sure.
Can Dave hear us?
Dave, Dave, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, hey guys, can you hear me okay?
We're just asking about, uh, August twenty fifth, if you're gonna be here or not.
Uh, one second, let me look. August. Please, yes, oh, that's next Monday. Uh. Yeah, we get back. In the morning, right, so yeah, yeah, I plan to be back, uh, at, at the meeting in person.
Melissa won't be here. Where's that leave us?
Okay.
So that's, you guys have, yeah, there's four.
So you have to show up now, sorry.
Dang it.
It's all good, all good with me. I wanna know what, I wanna know where Dave is right now. Like seeing.
North Dakota, so we just got, went across the border. So.
Okay.
So, I think the, the first thing on the agenda.
Yeah.
Under stewardship of resources, uh, school board goals twenty five, twenty six. Kind of lead off there.
Sure, um. So this is the time of the year where the board, um, has historically set, uh, goals or aims. Um, and I included a couple of different things, one was our aims from last year. We did review these over the last year, uh, once or twice and kind of did some status updates. But I thought we could kind of start with that, so you could get grounded in that a little bit and then talk about. Some possibilities for this next year. Um. Maybe before we even go there, Julie, if you go to the next slide. Just to give an overview of how we get to where we are with a number of things, so rewinding back, especially for our newer board members. In twenty twenty two, we did a pretty extensive community, um, survey. So, no, I would say community input gathering, because a survey was part of it, focus groups were part of it, phone interviews were part of it. Um, and we got some help from some, a couple local people that do this for a living and they created this report. Um, if you haven't seen this report, it might be good to get your hands on, I don't know, have you seen it, Tom?
I have not.
So you can e- email that out to the new, maybe to the whole board, so they have it, yeah. Um, that report identified a number of things that, uh, that we were doing well and things that the community wanted us to work on. That resulted in us developing these s- uh, strategic directions. And then those strategic directions, uh, resulted in our operational plan. And our board aims or board goals, as well as the strategy team goals, I'd say the board aims or goals really work in support of the strategic directions. Uh, um, and the strategy team goals really work on the, this more discreet action plan that is the operational plan. Uh, I won't even say it's an action plan, it contains objectives and then the strategy team drills it down into what are the actual actions that we can take, so. The operational plan talks about disparities, the strategy team gets into, we have to make this change to our data system so that we can accurately, you know. Do these assessments or that kind of thing, so the strategy team's purpose is really to work in the service of this operational plan. Um, so to the, uh, if we look at the aims from last year, the first one was to improve student achievement. You can see there, I won't read all this, but you can kind of see, um, how it tied to the directions. The timeline, the measurables or the date we're gonna gather data from and then, um. The status of those, you heard some of that last week from Jill Carroll, um, MCA results will be out. Um, any day now. The second one was around improving the employee experience, we really engaged our wellness committee, um, this last year in that work. They held the first all district employee event that we've had in a long time, I got to sit in the dunk tank. Um, on a cold day, so that was fun for people. Um, and then we re-did or did another staff wellness survey to see how staff were doing with, um. A variety of things and the wellness committee took a dive into that data this spring. And we're teed up to do that again, uh, in February. The third goal or aim was around. The Read Act and Wit and Wisdom, um, and what's unique about the board, I think. You know, you're not doing this work every day, right, like the work, the work of the board is supporting, kind of supporting this work, so how did you support this work? You approved the, you approved the curriculum, um, implementation position. And that position, Carol's position, has been really monumental in both of those items, so. Uh, the board played a huge role in, in supporting that work and, um. We have all of our teachers trained, but our seven new ones, uh, which was significant and I'd say that our district, I don't, I don't wanna make it sound like we were. I don't wanna, you know, what, what did my dad always say, don't break your arm patting yourself on the back, uh, that sounds, it sounds like it. Um, but we did get out ahead of, uh, MOU for the Read Act that we needed to do as far as, um, how we were gonna compensate staff. And we made decisions early and that really helped move that along, so we weren't scrambling, so, um. And that all comes back to decisions here too and getting an MOU done and things like that, so. Uh, four, I mentioned the strategy team already, in terms of partnerships, as you can see, there was a, an aim in every one of the strategic directions last year. Uh, and. You'll see strategic, uh, new strategic team goals soon. That team has those ready to go. The newsletter and the targeted campaign, um, last year, that was the, one of the board aims and we did, uh, rolled out two newsletters. With, again, without a full-time communications person and, um, also. Created a targeted campaign around, uh, small community spirit, big time opportunities, which, uh, you know, we have a video that was created, it's been on billboards. Things like that, it was in those newsletters, so, uh, we executed on that and then the balance, uh, the financial, the stewardship of resources piece. For fiscal twenty five, so that was where we landed last year. Included in your materials is, uh, the operational plan and the strategic directions and then you'll also see. The colorful looking sheet, those are the strategic, uh, or the strategy team's goals for. The upcoming year and again, you can kind of see how this gets a lot more granular, this is kind of the everyday work. Um, we get into specific language about, uh, adoption objectives, very specific. Uh, naming curriculum by, uh, or curriculum by actual material name. Um. MTSS language, it gets very specific about percentages and MTSS playbooks, what's happening at high, so they, this just drills into the. What does this look like every day, again, in the service of that. Operational plan, so, um, the last thing is just is the aims for this upcoming year. Um, I took a look at what we had had before, I included some recommendations. Um, but these are strictly some thoughts, uh, obviously you're the board and you can, um. Uh, work through this in any way that you'd like, but there is a, every one of our strategic directions. Is represented here, which I think is important and should be important no matter where we land, I think that's a good thing to do. Um, so yeah, I guess I'm not sure if we wanna just go through these recommendations or if you wanna take a, uh. Kind of piece by piece or what the board would, uh, prefer to do.
Um, I, for me, I think I'd like to go through the recommendations.
Okay.
David Marty, this is life prepared.
Oh no. It's a test, thank you.
Oh. At least we know that you're safe, David.
Sorry. Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct, thank you, sorry about that. I know.
That's amazing.
That was quick, good to know.
It's new for me. Yes, correct. Correct.
I'm having a hard time understanding you.
Correct.
Oh no.
Excuse me, y'all.
Don't take your phone too deep. They're gonna call Sharon, Sharon's.
Yeah, we'll have EMS in here. No, I do not, thank you, it was a test.
You weren't testing, is that correct?
Correct.
With David Marty, is that correct?
Correct. Thank you. Sorry about that. If anybody needs help, let me know, because.
Good thing you're also prepared.
Um, yeah, I agree with Mark, just to, when I go through the recommendations.
Yes. Okay, so the first one, um, is continuing a focus on student achievement, I think that's central to. What we do as a school district and I think having it central to the work, even again, even though the school board's not in the classroom teaching the children, I think. Um, it's important that that's lifted up in the center, uh, this really, I think, creates the opportunity and the obligation for. The data to be showing up in front of you, which I think is important, not only for you, but also the community to see that that data's, uh. Uh, here, so you get reports a couple of times, you got one last week from Jill and Carol. We have a data for learning one that will come out to you in, uh, November or December, uh, there'll be a deeper dive into what we're doing with data, so. And it creates the opportunity for that to be front and center for you, I agree. The second.
Hey Matt, can you hear me?
Yep.
I, I, what I do, I, sorry, I'm, I'm not sure if I'm breaking up or not, but what I like about that one, it being number one, is that is the core of what we're all here for. And I think it makes sense for that to be number one, not only is it important to be on the list, but to be number one, I think sends a message. To the community and to the whole, all the stakeholders of our district, so I just wanted to call that out.
Do we wanna, do you wanna land on like, yep, we're gonna keep that one or do you wanna go through all of them, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I would like to keep that.
I think we need to keep that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the second one, uh, we, you know, like I, I said earlier, we did do a pretty good job of getting going on the Read Act, we're not done. Uh, it real, the Read Act implementation is really going to be. I hesitate to say three, it'll take three years to implement the law. Uh, the, the, the technicalities of the law, it'll take years to really implement what the Read Act is about. Um, so in its narrowest sense, the Read Act, the law is about specific training, specific curriculum. We are in what I would consider. Or what I think MDE would call an in-between year now, originally in their timeline, uh, last year was supposed to be year one. This year was going to be year two and that, and, yeah, year one and then year two. They delayed the implementation of year two because they weren't ready to do year two yet. Um, so what we're focused on, who were focused on training this year is the individuals that didn't go through the training last year. Which is one of the challenges of that to begin with, our, our staff. Went through an entire year of a training protocol. It was Wednesdays, it was out of work time that they got paid a stipend to do, they were taking assessments, like it was a. You know, in some cases, uh, in some places, they looked at how to grant. Graduate credit for it. It was that much work, um, so you go through all this in our case with this whole group of people. Then you have people leave and you hire new people and you're not, you can't recreate that thing, right? So, um. And, and the state created three. Curriculums, um, or three training protocols that could be used, one was carryall. Um, one was. I should know, because my wife didn't remember. Letters and the third one, I don't remember and I forget that one every time. Um. I think that's the one that Greenway did, actually. Um. We're going to be able to partner with the Northwest Service Co-op because they're offering training in carryall for our new teachers, so. They're going to be, our new teachers are gonna have, I think, eight training days during the year where they're gonna be able to get. The training, the carryall training, get the same, you know, level of certification, et cetera. Uh, but that's something we're gonna have to be managing all the time until the. Until teachers are coming out of college with that, right? Um, and they don't all, they, all of our teachers don't have to have the same, they just have to have one of those three. So if we have a teacher that comes and they went through the full letters training, which actually I think is longer than ours, it's two years as letters. They went through all the letters training, they're good to go, but they just have to have one of those three done. Um, and that is for K eight teachers who teach reading primarily. Phase two is secondary, uh, primarily secondary and special ed, so that is upcoming. So we're gonna need to update that Read Act MOU so that it's relevant for this batch this year. Um, and we'll probably have to have some form of it for the foreseeable future. So anyway, that, that's, I guess, a status update of, of where we are at the Read Act, all to say, we still have. We still have to keep our foot on that pedal, uh, in order to be, um. Meet the standards of the law, so.
Well, I, a couple of questions, uh, in that regard, are we supporting, uh, those teachers who have gone through a year of training? Uh, so that it's not just you had a year of training?
Yeah, so, uh, I think the. They are, they are implementing the practices that they learned during that training in their implementation of the new curriculum.
Okay.
That's right, that's exactly right, so the, the carryall training, the letters training really gets at. How do children learn how to read? How do you recognize difficulties, it's sort of the, um, philosophy, the philosophy behind. The, the teaching methods, the pedagogy and then the wit and wisdom is the, kind of the how part of it, is the materials that we use.
What we have, uh. Uh, we've got a lot of substitutes coming in.
Yeah.
There's reasons, are they up to speed?
Yeah, so I'm glad you asked, on Wednesday, we're hosting a training day. Most of the day for our guest teachers, we have seventy teachers registered. Um, the last part of that day will be Carol here talking through wit and wisdom.
Okay, good.
How does UFL fit into all of it?
Yeah, it's a good question, so you, you know, UFL, OG, you know, blah, 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 right, and, um, so. Orton Gillingham, and I'm not a literacy expert, so I'm gonna start with that. Um, Orton Gillingham is like a foundational approach to how children learn letter sounds, phonics, like. It's like a stuff they get in pre-K, K one, like those early ages and it also, for many years, was like the standard for. Uh, dyslexia, uh, work, because it, it helps sort of sort, create that schema for kids as they learn how to read. Uh, the basic foundational skills. Um. We, we started implementing Orton Gillingham OG. Maybe four years ago, three years ago, and teachers got trained in that and it had a, it had a really good impact and we've kind of plateaued with. Uh, we've kind of plateaued with our implementation, uh, our achievement, our results are kind of plateaued and what we're running into and the teachers have shared, like. There's some pacing challenges with it, there's like, um, how much time that it takes, uh, the challenges of it, so they shared a bunch of challenges. And in the meantime, the University of Florida, uh, Literacy Institute. I think that's what it stands for.
Take that, yes.
UFL, they developed a program that's based on OG, but it's sort of like. Just the basics, it's like OG light, just the basics and it addresses a lot of the issues that our teachers were like. This is a barrier, this is a friction spot, like this is a tension point, time, pacing, approach, um. Maybe fidelity of time, like maybe with OG because it was very regimented and you do it this particular way and you have this, you know, sandbox thing here and. UFL is very efficient, maybe is a better way to say it, and so that actually meshes well. With OG that we've had and it meshes well with the, the concerns we heard from teachers. And, and it also continues to lay the groundwork for the wit and wisdom stuff to carry out.
So will we have, will we be supporting. Incoming staff that are brand new and making sure that they're trained on OG as well, as well as UFL?
They won't need OG, they'll only need to be trained in UFL, yep, so they'll be kind of like the, our, the OG OG teachers. Uh, they got the full thing more than they'll actually. Be used now, um, and it, and I think you heard Carol mention it the other day, one of the benefits too. University of Florida is putting this out there as a, you know. Public service, it's, all the materials are free, um, and it's recent, I mean, it's a research institution, so they're. So it's, it's. It's how it should work.
Yeah.
Like our post-secondary institutions that are doing research on education and how the brain works, like. They should be informing us, uh, informing our work, so I, I think that's a good, it's a good thing, so, uh, you know, we went through this transition. So, uh, you know, we went through this transition last spring, talked to a number of teachers. We actually pulled our, uh, English language, English language arts committee together and said, look. These are the concerns we've heard, this is how it's being addressed other places, UFL is an option, what do you think? And of course, like, it was one more piece of change in another, in an already change-filled year. But our, once our teachers got past the, kind of the initial, here we go kind of thing. They saw that it met the needs, they were actually, many of them, most of them saw that this is actually gonna help us. Um, and so we talked about it as, you know, this was like a twenty-degree pivot, not necessarily a hundred and eighty-degree change. It was just pivoting a little bit. Um, B, and I, one of the things, if you were to look back. Um, into a. Let's see, a previous version of our operational plan. Um, or actually, if you look there now, so if you look on page two of our operational plan. That, this thing, I think we shifted formats on Julie here. Um, but objective three point one, two, three, four. You can see there, it says, a curriculum cycle and review process, process aligned with the MDE standards review cycle and best practices is developed and implemented. So that was an objective in our operational plan two years ago. Our strategy team took that, did it. We now have a curriculum, uh, implementation plan and cycle that's complete. That's what we worked through with English Language Arts, so that objective is completed. And now we're at a place where we can be utilizing that in science and math and the other curriculums as they come across. So it was good to share that with the group, like, from, you know, we need to do this and check that off. And that teed us up then for the next thing that we need to do, um, in our plan. So we, science was sort of a little bit, um, how do I say it? They were, science was sort of downstream a little bit before this planning document was put together. So we're having to, like, reel science back in. Uh, and make that implementation fit our, our plan. Versus having the plan done on the front, like we are with math, where the, the, how we're gonna select curriculum is done. That, that process is laid out, math will go through that process from beginning to end. Science, we kind of jumped in midstream to that, uh, and are having, you know, kind of circling back on some things.
Matt, can I ask you one question?
Yeah, yeah.
So when you talk about a curriculum development plan, uh, across English, math, and science. Are they unique enough that they need to be separate? Um, curri- curriculum development plans based on their subjects? Or are we looking to have a more comprehensive, what does curriculum development plan selection look like at Grand Rapids?
Yeah, um, I really wanna show something, Julie, how can I do that?
You've got your, your, like, you log into the Google Meet sharing screen, like, on, share it, then Dave can see it too.
Alright, so I need to, I'll, I'll show, I'll show you what we've been working on, just so it's more, um, concrete. Cause I know what I'm talking about is sort of. Out in the, talking theoretically, that I have. Oh, yeah, look at that. Um, okay, we go here. Alright, so then I need to present, is that right, Julie? Alright, so what's gonna pop up is something that we put together this year. You probably won't be able to see it very well, Dave, but this is a resource for our principals, it's a dashboard with links to, um. It's a link, it's a just, it's a spreadsheet with links to all the most important things in their life. At work, okay, so it's kind of all in front of them. It's all in front of them, uh, versus having to chase down a thousand different links. Um, that's not the point of what I'm doing right now. I will, so under curriculum, I will show you. This will get at your question, I think, Dave. Alright, so when I talk about our process, this is our curriculum review process. And I will try to make it, can you see this at all, Dave? It's gotta be tough.
Yep, 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 no, I can see it just fine, I'm, I'm zooming in on it, so I can see it, yep.
So we talk about it in terms of learn, learn, deepen, know, that's sort of our rhythm. And we can stay in a phase longer than a year if we need to, or two years if we need to. Um, it's as long as we need to do that in order to, to accomplish the phase. So this document goes through, and again, this was the, uh, the objective in our, our operational plan. That I mentioned earlier was developing this. Because the process itself should be pretty similar, no matter what curricular area we're talking about. We should start with, you know, getting together and checking our budget, um, getting a team together, looking at standards. Like that is a, a process we should do pretty much every time. And then there are nuances there, for sure, that you have to work through. So like, one of the nuances that happened with the ELA curriculum was the state saying, you can pick from this or this or this. So that changed everything, right? Um, it didn't change our need to get a team together and, um, we developed. Um, protocols for who's on the team and what they're signing up for. So every team, like the math team that's meeting or is getting together, Carol mentioned. That team will go through these same commitments. That says, hey, if I'm a part of this team, I'm gonna attend, collaborate, I'm gonna participate, I'm gonna lead PD, I'm gonna. So all of our staff know going into the process, what does it mean to be on the curriculum review team? And our ELA team, our English Language Arts team. They really were rock stars in the process because they were the ones that said, hey. These are what the teacher expectations are as far as implementation of this curriculum. This is what we should be doing on this day, this is what we should do, this is how we're gonna go about doing this. They created accountability mechanisms for the teacher team. It wasn't the principals, you know, from up on high saying, do this by this date. It was a team looking at the materials going, you know, how, you know, let's figure out how to do this. And there was revision. Um, it was our first time through the curriculum, we had to make changes. And we did that, we pulled the team together and said, this is, you know, what's not working, how do we adapt? And that team did an amazing job. It's not an easy thing to do, cause you're kind of putting your neck out there, right? Um, so I'm really proud of that group. Um. Let me go back to. Yeah. I'll go back to this. Keep looking at Dave, but. Might while looking at this. Um, so again, you can see in that left column, developing committee, digging into standards, developing timelines. Um, coming up with a, a rubric in order to evaluate curriculum. So, you know, when we get to this math selection piece. I wouldn't be surprised if there's thirty curriculums that we start out with, that's how long the list will be.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just gonna be enormous. And so having a rubric that we can start from that says, we're gonna whip, this whole group's out. Because they don't, you know, meet Minnesota standards, or they don't incorporate this particular, you know, criteria we have. So that's gonna be really important. Once we get through that, you can see phase three, um, that's the adoption year. So that's when we start implementing, or we start getting into the curriculum materials. And then phase four is, okay, we're deepening. So last year in our wit and wisdom year was learn. Do walkthroughs, monitor, respond to implementation data, Carol shared some of that in the last six months. And then deepen, we're heading into that this year, where it's like, okay, we've been through it once. So one of the things that, that Carol put together was some, um, teacher support mechanism. So like, if a teacher is behind five lessons, what do we do? So we have a protocol for that, now what happens if a teacher's struggling? What does support look like? If a teacher's ahead five lessons, what does that mean? Uh, how do we respond there? And then, you know, know is sort of in the plan, do, study, act, or that kind of long-term change cycle. Know is like that, we're, we're, uh, running the program now and making the small changes as they come along. So this is the, this is the process, Dave, that we will use with any, uh, content area. With the caveat that every content area is going to have some nuance. We're gonna have to, you know, the team might look different, the standards in some cases, like going into the weeds here. But FIED, for instance, doesn't have state. They have state standards for FIED, I think we have national FIED standards. So what standards we're using is different, um. But there's nuances like that, so this is the process. Does that answer your question?
It does, and so I guess my follow-up then would be that we, so we did the English Language Arts curriculum. Um, where we did one year, we're going into the second year of that now. Um, next up is math and then science is right after that, is that correct?
It's kind of like, science. We started implementing science three years ago before this document was developed. So we didn't implement science as well as we implemented ELA. Because we didn't have these protocols in place, the fidelity checks in place. And so we're kind of having to go back to science and go, okay, how are we, like, what do walkthroughs? What do principals look for now with science implementation? So we're kind of having to go back, so.
Sure.
Kind of having to go back. Language Arts, it was like, in the moment we're developing this, math is next and will really be. The most, you know, on-time implementation of this process. Because even the ELA one, we were developing this process as we were going through it. It was really helpful to inform the process that we needed. Math will be the first one where we're running the program, um, while we're not in it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, got it, yep, it does, and so do we have goal years then for those?
Yeah.
So math on twenty, is that listed on the, the goal sheet?
Yeah, it's not listed on the, no, it's not listed on here. That would be helpful, I bet.
I would think so, uh, cause I think that's something we can go to the community and say, hey, we did English Language Arts this year, this year. You know, X year is when we're gonna have math adopted and go through that same transition, same with science, same with anything. And that way people can, you know, we can just hold ourselves accountable to that. Because honestly, given that this is a, what, what I believe to be the case of four-year implementation kind of.
Yeah.
Uh, timeline, uh, some of us may not even see these come to be, uh, during our terms on the board. So what we're doing here now is, it's, it's really important that we get it right. Because generations of boards will be working through this stuff after us.
I would have preferred if you said some of you, um, you know.
Yeah, uh, yep, it's, you, you, you don't need to read into any of that, any of that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go on mute now, again, I've said too much.
Alright, I'll add some years there so we can kind of have that marker in that document, um, so it's clear, kind of where we're landing with these, that's good. The, the last piece I had to that one, and again, um, this is flexible, is, but is just, so again, this is sort of in this. Evidence-based practices and student-centered learning direction. I listed, you know, monitor the implementation of GRAVA. So we develop performance indicators for GRAVA, that data will come to you. Um, and it seemed like it made sense to have that included in here, uh, as one of the aims for the board. Thoughts on, on that number two?
We have enough specificity on REDACT, it says, it's kind of generic support, ongoing implementation of REDACT. It feels to me like we're pushing further beyond that, um, into wit and wisdom and additional levels. And I, does this, does this cover what we intend?
I could be more specific about this being, um, kind of where we are in twenty-five, twenty-six as it relates to the REDACT, what year we're in.
Just feels like we have a higher, uh, commitment there than continue, continue to support reflects.
When do we realistically think that we're gonna get to a point that we hire teachers? And we don't have to train them, you know, they're ready to go in our, you know, carryall was. You, you know, they already have their carryall or whatever and, you know. I mean, you know, cause what I'm hearing here, I'm concerned that we've got maybe ten years that we're gonna have to bridge here. Pretty active training.
Right.
On a regular basis to try to.
My experience is the teacher education colleges do not pick up on this stuff very quickly.
That's what I'm concerned about, yeah.
Um, I, I would be surprised if a lot of them have implemented this in five or ten years even.
Yeah, I'd say, I would agree, I would say that I would be surprised if we saw trained. Candidates sooner than. Twenty-nine, thirty.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to have a pretty outlined.
Yep.
Onboarding plan for the next ten years potentially, right?
Yep.
Is what I'm kind of hearing.
Cause. At least the next five for sure.
You know, of how, when we bring people on, they're gonna have to have this, 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 and.
Yeah.
How do we implement that, how do we do it cost-effectively too, right? I, I mean, cause that's the other part is you get some, you get some scales of efficiency of scales when you're doing it in a group somewhat. Now when you're trying to implement it in smaller groups.
Yeah.
Um, that's why I think we need to have some sort of legislative lobby or whatever, or REDACT. Um, funding, I mean, I mean, we got a couple of years, but that's not gonna do it for us. You know, and as long as we don't have funding coming from the state, we, we know where that comes from. You know, a general fund.
And, you know, to some degree, there will, we're talking about, when I'm saying twenty-nine, thirty. I'm talking about colleges and universities in the state of Minnesota.
Exactly.
That get their teaching licensing credentials through the state of Minnesota. They have to comply if they're gonna be able to issue or, or work with kids on licenses. If you're a teacher from North Dakota, coming and taking a job in East Grand Forks. In ten years or whenever, they're not, they won't have it. I, I don't, I don't, you know. I don't see the, you know, South Dakota State University's not gonna cha- add carryall to its list. You know, I don't know, they could add letters, cause carryall's really a University of Minnesota program. So, yeah, I. So, yeah, I. It's gonna be an ongoing issue and it's one of the things that superintendents brought up right away with the REDACT. We're like, wait a minute, what about this? And it was like. Charge for it, charge. Yeah. The. The good thing. Uh, that I think. That we have going for us is we have a stronger relationship. With the service co-ops than we've ever had. So just from a, a high level. Uh, each region of the state is served by a service co-op that's organized. Um, under the laws of Minnesota and they're intended to serve. Regional groups of school districts. And these service co-ops all operate, even though they were originally. Created the same. They operate very different now. You have some service co-ops like in the southwest, west central area of the state. They're huge. They have hundreds of employees. They're providing direct service to children. Some schools, I think, like contract with them for their staff. They're enormous. Um, you have some service co-ops that have. Become money making machines by negotiating. Contracts for volume purchasing across the country. Um, and then you have some service co-ops that have done kind of taken a different approach. Ours is northeast. It's out of Mountain Iron. And our co-op is predominantly focused on. Insurance. They all started with insurance in some way. But they focused on group insurance. Broadband. Some of technology affiliated with that broadband. And then they've done some stuff around real low incidence. Uh, special ed services, you know, hearing, vision, things like that. They haven't done a lot with teaching and learning historically. Now, over the last five years, MDE has rolled out a number of things. Because of legislation in most cases. And that's resulted in. MDE using the service co-ops. More. To support schools universally. So our service co-op now has staff. Supporting us with implementation of the REDACT, supporting us with other training. Um, and that's what I said earlier. Our service co-op isn't doing carry all, but our teachers are getting connected with the. Northwest Service Co-op, which is. Like out of. Boston. I think it's Boston. To get that training. So that's what they're gonna have to continue to do. They're gonna have to continue to work through these regional cooperatives to support school districts. Especially in outstate because in the metro, it's no big deal. An Okahehenepein could put on a training and get eighty teachers there from the neighboring school districts. Cause between the handful of whom, they employ five thousand teachers.
Those eighty might live in that school district already.
That's right. That's right. That's right. You have to have a certain number of them to do the training. So uh, the service co-ops are gonna be more important than ever.
Oh, so that, so the state, who, is it the state that's, who's monitoring? That we're implementing this and how is it being regulated right now? Is it, is it through teacher licensure that your licensing can revolve? Or how, how are they, how are they enforcing? Lack of a better term. How are they?
I don't, I, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that for sure. I do know that. Every year, we have to upload. What's called a STAR report to the state. And that be, that report essentially matches the licensure of every teacher. Against the courses that we say they're teaching. And then there's a discrepancy report that gets kicked out that says, hey. This, you know, Matt Gross, you say he's teaching FIED and he's licensed in math. Can't do that. And then, so uh, if it's not happening that way, I'd be surprised. That there's some component of STAR where we're having to validate that those teachers have had, uh, completed that training.
But they haven't outlined that yet.
I, I, I don't know for sure.
Okay.
Casey, Casey probably would know more about that. Yeah. As far as like the, you know. As far as some of the other. Monitoring compliance pieces. It's like a lot of things with the legislature or MDE.
Pass it, figure it out.
There's not, yeah, pass it, figure it out later or there's no. There's no plan. And may never be one. To truly monitor compliance.
How are we, I mean, we're documenting it obviously.
Yep, yep. So one of the things that, you know. Carol had to include in her literacy plan was some information that would. Um, indicate compliance with the REDACT. And that literacy plan that we submit. Triggers or opens the door for funding. So I mean, there's, there is a piece there. Yeah. Um, but back to, so I can uh, put some more detail around the years for these curricular areas. I can put a more, a little bit more flesh on the bone with the REDACT piece.
Thank you.
Any other pieces of this you'd like to see changed, deleted? Strike and replace.
I think two is good.
I'd like to keep that.
Okay, um, three. Three, you know. In the partnerships and collaboration, I think. Um, the strategy team has really tried to take its. Q from the board. That's why there's at least two very specific reports about the strategy team. Um, that's why these goals are tied back to what, you know, the board's setting. I don't know that a real hardcore. Uh, I guess I, I, I don't know about this goal, but I guess what I'm getting at is. I think that the strategy team knowing that they're connected to you. Is really important to them as a team. Because they put a lot of work in to. Make sure the nuts and bolts are happening. So I don't know if there's a better way to talk about this or to frame this. Um, it's not like a real clean, perfect. Strategic planning kind of a. An aim, but that was my intention of having some kind of a connection in here to the strategy team.
I think just leave it as is. I mean, we get the reports from them. And that is important that we hear from them.
Do, is, it says here two times a year. Do we feel like that's? That that's enough time? Uh, should it be a couple? I mean, I'm just, I'm thinking if it's one per semester essentially, right, throughout the school year, then that's fine. But uh, are we anticipating things to be different? Each quarter? Will they feel like they need to, at the end of each quarter, give us a little bit of update? I'm just, I'm just thinking.
I would even promote uh, a monthly update. Doesn't need to be a full report. Like we have board reports. Have to have a monthly update from this uh. Strategy team so that they know that we're connected and we know what they're up to. And that in addition to twice a year, a full.
Yeah, and only because I'm just thinking that um. Things are just happening all the time, right? And so they might be able to give. More insight if we do, like you're suggesting that once a month meeting. There might be a little bit more um. I don't know, thought process is shared amongst each other. If they were able to. And then that two times a year, just this is what, this is every, every month we met with you guys, this is what we discussed. These are some of the ideas that were brought up and this is what we're able to implement beyond that.
It is, it is a pretty comprehensive report and I know it takes a lot of time to put it together.
Yeah, Mark, um, if I could jump in to, I think, um, I'm gonna uh disagree a bit there. Because from a strategic standpoint, um. Let's see. If we, if we are constantly filling out the report. Um, we're not necessarily living the strategy and I think strategy is something that. Um, you set and you revisit over longer periods of time than a month. And so I guess my opinion is that twice a year seems relevant because otherwise. We can get into this whipsaw effect of, oh, this didn't work this month, let's try something new next month. And then, then we don't have a cohesive, long-term strategic plan. We have more of a. Well, how do we do this month? Oh, let's change and let's go somewhere else.
Something I could do if, if, I mean, I, it might be too micro for the board. But our strategy team meets, you know, monthly. Um, I could. Either synthesize the minutes from that meeting or, I mean, it would really just be looking into the. Nitty gritty of the, of that work side. That would be something that, that would be possible.
As part of the superintendent's report?
As part of my report, the, my, my superintendent's report? I could do that.
I would address my.
And exactly, and like understanding exactly what Dave is saying, that makes sense. That's, that's absolutely fair. And then to. Just let them know that um. That they are supported in that and then uh, yeah, it doesn't make sense to have to keep meeting like Dave's saying. Cause then you are. If you're constantly changing things and what's your strategy and how are you actually implementing anything and how are you watching that? Play out.
It's good point, Dave.
Maybe I'll add monitor and support there too. Maybe I'll add that word there. It, it, and we got, we have really good people. We have really good, we have really good people here and I'm, I'm really proud of the. The work they're doing. But so with that, adding that to my soup's report. Um, keep that one then?
Agreed.
I think so, yep.
Um, the fourth one that I recommended was to plan and execute the community engagement process. We've been talking about for a while. That seems very direct and relevant. Um, we actually have a meeting coming up this Wednesday for that uh, committee, that subcommittee. So that one seems very straightforward.
Yeah, I have no issues with that one. I think that's perfect.
Any concerns with that ones? The, the last one um, in kind of under the stewardship of resources realm that I'm recommending. This is because of OPEB, this isn't going to be a year where we can talk about. A balanced budget per se. Because we're gonna have to. You know, pay cash on the front end for these OPEB benefits. So when we run this audit, it won't, the, the next year's audit, it won't. There's really nothing we could do to balance the budget on paper. Um. So rather than focus on that as a goal. Uh, my recommendation or thought process uh, in, in uh. Met with Mark two to, to talk about it was to develop and implement the plan for OPEB. That includes, you know, um, our levy plan. It also includes adjustments to uh, OPEB. Uh, retiree health or whatever it is that we need to do there. But that's really the objective of this uh, is to have that plan solidified in the next year. And probably if we're gonna, depending on the cycle, we want to hit with open enrollment, could be the next four months.
I think that's fair.
Last statement lost me. How does open enrollment happen?
Um, uh, sorry, o- open enrollment for health insurance.
Oh, okay, okay. Now I understand. Yeah, I'm thinking of a different opening.
Yeah, right. Yeah, sorry. Yep. Yeah.
Okay.
So we have to make decisions about alignment with Medicare open enrollment. Yeah.
Yep.
Sorry.
No, I. Same acronyms all over the place, right? Okay. Um, I, you know, I would have to say that the, the appreciation I have of this is. You know, we're looking at options, right? I mean. I know we can levy for it, but. That's not necessarily what we want to do. We, we need to. Explore what. Get the same effect with a lot less cost, right? Be financially responsible to everyone on this. I appreciate the way we've looked at it, not just.
Those were the five that um, that surfaced for me in my thought process. I guess I'm curious if there are other things that the board uh, thinks we should include.
I think it's a, a nice balance of the things that we are charged to do. Like number one and, and focusing on student achievement. Uh, but also with the stewardship of resources and the situation we find ourselves in. The following the laws that are, are out there now with the REDACT. Um, I think it's the right blend of, of focuses for us. So I, I wouldn't have anything else to add and I, I think that you've done a nice job putting together and kind of bubbling up the ones that. Need to be on the list. So I guess I, I, I like where it lands.
Is there anything else that people would want to add?
Do we want, you know, we're, we're taking on a new venture in our district with the online. Education, right? Do we need to? How are we monitoring that? How are we determining if that's a path we want to continue? And if it's doing the success, the, the tensions we want with it. I, again, I want to make sure if we're doing it, we're, our students are successful when they come out of that, right? Um, and do we need, because it is a completely new venture, does it need to be something that we're putting into here? And considering. Measurable goals on and regular. Regular kind of look backs.
Yeah, I might have skated, I might have skated over it too quick, Tom, in two C.
So, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So that was, yeah.
Yeah.
The acronym there.
Yes, there's another, yeah.
Well, but, but should we separate that completely? Because it is a separate school, you know, it is considered a separate school, you know, for us, right?
Yep. Yeah, we definitely could do that. We could pull that into a, a separate one. These are the um.
Just, I'm just concerned that it's so different from anything we've approached.
Sure.
Before that. We, we don't even know what we don't know about it.
Yeah.
What I'm concerned about, right?
Yeah. What do y'all, what do y'all think? Supportive of that? Was pulling to a sixth one? We had six last year, so it's not, nothing magical about the number. Um.
That's fine.
This, this is the uh, these are the key performance indicators that we talked about when we rolled this to the data to grab. So that, this should be the, this should be the data we need when that comes around. So I'll pull that one to, I'll pose that, pull that one into a separate, separate category.
And do we have uh, who of our principals are supervising that program?
Yeah. Yeah, we should build some reports in um. Build some reports in there for Andy and Clayton.
It might also be good to, you know, we interact a lot. And while a lot is subjective, but we do interact with students that go to our brick and mortar schools in different ways at events or pep fests or visits or whatever. But is there a way we can somehow incorporate some feedback mechanisms from parents and students that are in the virtual academy as part of their reports? Or in addition to the reports, just to hear kind of from a horse's mouth, what their experience is like?
Like along the way this year?
Yeah, I think it'd be good to just check in and see how things are going with those students. Because, you know, naturally within the essence of that program, you don't have the physical touchpoints that we have with the rest of the students.
I'll, I'll add that in too. I think one of the, I don't, I closed it. One of the performance indicators had to do with family and student data. But I think we, that was more summative focused. And I think what you're talking about is more like checking the temperature along the way.
Yeah.
We can build that out.
Yep, I think that's, I think that'll help us a lot with, as we assess its effectiveness and if we want to continue to support it. And so data point, that'll be helpful.
Okay.
Chair, we've, uh, we talked a little bit about the planning and executing the community engagement process. Have we talked about the board's responsibility for resource development for the organization specifically? I don't. I, I think it's Wednesday that this initial. Yep, the twentieth, I think, right?
Yeah.
I, I don't think we've really gotten too deep into that though. Well, it's, you know, the community is certainly a major element of that. But we certainly have federal and state resources that feed into this as well. We as a board need to weigh in on that. It's a question, that's not a statement. Can you say more about the state and federal resources? Well, we are dependent in large part on state funding for the schools. And if the state starts nickel and diming us, that comes out of our bottom line every time. Do we need to, as a board, do we need to have a position on state and federal funding and, and other resources, just funding in general?
Do you think that would sound like to, like developing a, a, a platform? Of like a position platform?
Or a legislative?
Legislative platform?
I think that would.
Definitely be relevant.
Be a little more formal, basically, coming to.
Yeah.
Coming to our, to our representatives.
I can definitely add that.
I think that's a good one.
I think it's a good one. Great work. Okay.
Anything else anybody would like to add here? Can you and Julie kind of put together a little bit of a, kind of shot? And we'll put that off for.
Yep.
Usually it should go to the board.
Yep.
Or the following week.
All right, you'll see this, yeah, you'll see a finished one either the twenty-fifth or second.
Thank you for great work, Matt. Any other business?
Can I ask one quick question? Where did we land for the twenty-fifth? Then are we still gonna have the meeting?
It sounds like there will be enough attendance to hold the meeting.
Okay, if that changes, it was a slow, it's not awesome. Okay.
Just, I think quickly, I don't want to. I think Melissa will be communicate, has Melissa communicated with the board at all about? She has some things going on in her family medically, and I, I think I'll just leave it at that. That are gonna make it, they're gonna require her to step away for a little bit.